My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the public which stands for honor, honor, God, individual, liberty, and justice.
I could be seated. We're going to start off the meeting with some presentations this evening. The first, though, I have a resolution to read before we get into the presentation. Upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, be it resolved that the Allenville Education TV studio and W E L V FM radio station be renamed the Dennis J. Warner Studios. Do I have a motion?
Second.
It's been moved in second, and is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? No one. Motion carries. One abstain. Okay, one abstention. One abstention. Motion carries. We know you're in favor. Just want to say on behalf of the board that I think there's nobody else in the community, or I venture to say across the nation, who would deserve such an honor to be bestowed upon a radio station. That's certainly your husband, Dennis Warner, and he did a lot for this community. And I promise you, I wouldn't talk a lot about him, but I have a lot of respect for him. So I'm going to let you go up there and speak about him.
Thank you.
Your floor.
Yes, sir. It's a great day in the valley, and thank you to my fellow board members for honoring Dennis's legacy in this way. Naming the TV studio and radio station in his memory is a permanent acknowledgement of his varied and successful accomplishments in our school district. And, much like Dennis in the morning, it speaks to the presence of his spirit in our beautiful Rondout Valley. There are many lessons to be learned from suffering a profound loss. Over these four and a half years since Dennis died, there is one lesson that stands out above the others. While his body rests in peace up in Oak Ridge, and his spirit is truly free, the love we share with him stays with us. For the thousands of people who had the pleasure of his company, his conversation, his wisdom, these memories, this love we feel continues to inspire our thinking and enrich our lives. Dennis J. Warner Studios will go on benefiting the students in our school and the community at large. It will be a constant reminder of Dennis's way. In closing, I would like to share a quote attributed to Vincent Van Gogh. It defines the essence of Dennis Warner. "It is good to love as many things as one can, for therein lies true strength. Those who love much, do much, and accomplish much; and whatever is done with love is done well." Thank you very much for this honor.
Thank you. Alan, would you please go up there?
So, on behalf of the Board of Education, we'd like to present the studio with this sign placed outside the studio. And Dennis is honored.
Be honored to do that. Next up, we have some real special presentations for our retirees. But before we do the retirees, I would just like to say that some of these retirees coming up come from the class of, I like to say, the retiring class of 1999. And on behalf of the Board of Education, we would just like to extend our apologies to that particular class, retiring class anyway, as we've been doing these presentations, and during that year, those retirees were overlooked. We became aware of that this year, and this Board of Education, while it cannot go back in time and correct what happened back then, we can go forward and correct it now and say that we very much appreciate the retiring class and every retiring class, but in particular, our apologies to that class, and we certainly respect the job that you all did, and we hope that this little token of our sincere appreciation will go some ways in replacing what should have been done back then. So thank you to the class of 1999, and we can give them a round of applause, please. And I'd like to introduce the superintendent of schools, Lisa Wilds. Will be conducting this ceremony.
Okay, so, good evening, everybody. This has turned out to be an excellent annual event that we have. Not only do we recognize our retirees, but we also recognize those earning tenure, being granted tenure. So we do not have anybody that's going to be granted tenure. It's one of those off-years this year, but we do have retirees. And on behalf of the administrators, and again, the Board of Education, I'd like to express my sincere thanks to all of their hard work. You're going to be genuinely missed, and you're always invited back. And we have a gift for you this evening as a token of our appreciation. I'd like to start with someone who's not here tonight. Steve Jones was invited, could not make it. He is retiring as a cleaner, and everyone this evening is going to be receiving a clock. So I tried to change this up a little bit, but everyone wants you to have an alarm clock to wake up if you want to wake up. So everyone will be receiving a clock, and on the clock, your years of service are inscribed on it. So Steve Jones, we surely have missed him, and will continue to miss him. The next person we'd like to recognize is Josephina, or Josie, as she's well-known. Lavia, so Josie, if you could come up. So Josie's years of service are September 12th, 2001, to June 30th, 2018. And we appreciate all that you've done, and for our students and our school district, and have a wonderful, well-deserved retirement, Josie.
Thank you.
So our next honoree is Elena Quick, who's an elementary school teacher, and it will be a very difficult task to replace your energy and your love for the children, and we appreciate all your years. Your years of service are September 1st, 1994, through June 30th, 2018. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Barbara Devaney, who's a teaching assistant, who's retiring. And Barbara just snuck in her retirement letter to us that we're reluctantly going to accept, and we don't have a clock for you tonight. It's on order. But I will tell you that Barbara's years of service started on May 1st, 1991, and she'll be retiring effective September 1st, 2018. So Barbara, thank you. So the next honoree is from the class of 1999, who's with us this evening, and I'd like to call Fran Elias up. Fran? And Fran's years of service to the Allenville School District and the students is September 1st, 1964, through June 30th, 1999. Much appreciated, and I'm glad you're back. I hope you did it.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Keep talking, I bring it through.
Yes.
So I just want to mention the other honorees who are not here this evening, from the class of 1999, and that would be Frank Muller, who is a science teacher, who taught from September 1st, 1967, through June 30th, 1999. Frank Mera, who was an English teacher in our high school, and taught from September 1st, 1978, through June 30th, 1999. And Joanne Aaron, who was an elementary school teacher, who taught from September 1st, 1969, through June 30th, 1999. And Joanne Aaron, who was an elementary school teacher, who taught from September 1st, 1969, through June 30th, 1999. So well-deserved retirements, and sorry it took so long to recognize, but definitely well-deserved and recognized this evening. So thank you to the board. So give them a round of applause. So in closing, I just want to say a special thank you for someone every year who helps us put this event together, gets the cake, makes sure when we're all meeting, everything gets laid out, and I know she doesn't like to be recognized, she probably left already, but thank you to Patty, Mrs. Steinhoff, Patty Steinhoff, that's really helped us keep this event going. And at this time, I'm going to turn the program back over. Oh, and I'm sorry, she is not here this evening. This was also a late retirement, but Pat Corbett, who will be retiring effective June 30th, and her, I don't have, do I have her years of service? I do. January 8th, 1973, through June 30th, 2018. So Pat's going to be missed. She's an elementary school teacher. Make sure to get her back. Be thankful for her years of service. So I'm going to turn over the program back to filmatrician for another special recognition.
Though they cannot be with us this evening, we wanted to take the time to honor these two individuals who were recently honored at an awards dinner hosted by the Ulster County School Boards Association. They received the Distinguished Friends of Education Award, and that is Ken and Joan Beck. They very well deserve it, and I wish they could have been here this evening. We will honor them in a future ceremony, but congratulations to them, round of applause. You're all welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting. Moving on with the agenda, we have the acceptance of the minutes of the May 22nd meeting.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion? John?
Yes, we accidentally left off the softball team in the minutes under presentations for the Hall of Fame, so if we could add those back on.
The minutes will be amended to reflect that change. Any other additions? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries. Public forum. We have anybody for the public forum this evening?
We do have public forum.
I know we have Jane Eck, that's for the public forum. Want to come up? I'll recognize you.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome back Mrs. Friedman on the board, Mr. Story on the board, congratulations to Mrs. Ramirez. This is a busy board, Lisa, so be prepared. I also like to thank the board for the great job with Mrs. Wilds and Mr. Napoli on the budget, so it was nice to see it pass with no problem. I'm here to talk a little bit about the arts. On May 22nd, I watched the board meeting on TV, and I watched Mr. Moyer give out certificates to the athletes. Some of them were honor athletes, some of them, whatever particular sport they were in, they got a certificate or a pin, whatever. Some of them get varsity letters. But nothing happens to the arts. The arts is the music department and the art department. The art department, from kindergarten all the way up to high school, the art teachers worked very, very hard with these students. They put on another spectacular art show at the Hock Memorial Building in May. It was absolutely fabulous. I did see some of the board members there, which was really nice. It was just a beautiful thing to see our children, the work they did. And the high school people that did their stuff in, put their stuff in the show, was absolutely fabulous. I'd like to also think that the board, it's not feasible to give certificates to all the students that participated in arts, because it would be the whole school, too many children. But should be recognized is the art teachers. Mr. Griffin in high school, Mrs. Rowan, Mrs. Stinson, Mrs. Reese, and Mrs. Motillo. But not to leave anybody out, we need to mention the music department. The wonderful concerts that you hear all the time throughout the year, whether it's fall, winter, spring. It's absolutely fabulous. It brings music to your ears. It's really wonderful. And those teachers also should be recognized. You have Mr. Trembley, Mrs. Warden, you have Mrs. Peck, Mr. Griffin, and not to leave anybody out, my favorite group is the middle school, Mrs. Linda Gillette, who takes untrained voices and made the size of that chorus between seventh and eighth grade absolutely fabulous, this last concert that they just did. And Frittissimo, giving up time at night, on Tuesday nights, for the students to come down and to practice with them, hours and hours. And let's not forget Mrs. Christine Schoolmaker with the band. The students that she has now, she had in fifth grade when they were in elementary, and they're following her right up. She's now started a jazz band. And I know some of you sitting on the board have been here a long time, and remember Mr. Pete Stellato when we had the jazz band. And hopefully, something like that will come back again. But these teachers really need a lot of recognition. They have done a fabulous, fabulous job here at Allenville Central School. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Eck. Just to comment on that, I spoke with the superintendent, and it's not the intention of this board to overlook anybody. We've asked her to take a look at that and make sure that that gets corrected, and that we do recognize the music and art departments. So thank you for bringing that to our attention. Call to the podium Dana Pierce.
Good evening, Board of Education, Superintendent Wilds, and members of the Allenville School Community. I want to take a few minutes to discuss the education of my child, my responsibility as a parent, and the teacher's responsibility. I'm a former graduate of Allenville High School, and I'm presently working in another school district as a teacher assistant. My seven-year-old daughter, Skye, is a second-grade student in elementary school. She's, Skye's on the path to her educational success began in High Meadow, a private school in Stone Ridge. She spent a full year there. I made a crucial decision when I was about to have her start kindergarten to enroll her here at Allenville Elementary School. Skye's love for learning and exploring has always been a joy to me. Kindergarten and first grade were a great success. At the end of first grade, she was going back to her kindergarten class reading stories to her younger students. Imagine how taken back I was when I received her first report card for second grade. With no notification from her teacher or building-level administration, no phone call, no request for a meeting, a teacher presented to me during parent-teacher conference, a report card with a letter of an F as a reading grade for the first quarter and the second grade. Parents need to be aware that this is not the process for a parent to initially hear about a failing grade from their child. The teacher deemed her skills as a failure in class. No building-level RTI has been requested by the teacher, nor was there any indication of Skye's inability prior to the 15-minute end of the quarter parent-teacher conference. I can assure you, Skye's abilities and skills in reading have been above grade level. She's a second-grade student, and her current reading level is a 3.4, based on her Star Reading Test. So at this moment, I'm speaking directly to the parents. Monitor your children's daily school activities, ask questions, request updates on their strengths and weaknesses in your child's daily learning. Don't assume everything is okay, because apparently it was not, and you're not receiving returned assignments that have failing grades. Teachers need to hold accountability for what they do with their kids. So therefore, it's vital for the success of our children. So I direct this last comment to the Board of Education and Superintendent. Recommend communication regularly, not just during second or third parent-teacher conferences. Also assure that accurate and transparent record-keeping be made accessible upon request by the parent. I will be more vigilant, and I expect that the district to be as well. Thank you for this opportunity to share.
Thank you.
Thank you. Call to the podium Cheryl Lasanta.
I'm here representing my son, Sharif Lasan, who previously submitted a letter to the school board about the benefit basketball game to promote mentorship program in the school. We haven't heard anything back, and he asked me to represent him again because he's unavailable to attend, and he wants to know if he may here soon or after school ends about whether the school is, the school board is going to give permission for the use of the gym in order to have the basketball benefit game, or if they've taken it under consideration at all.
I'm going to ask the superintendent to address that.
So if you'd like to stop by the office, we could go over the particulars. There's a building use form, there's some insurance requirements. So I would feel free to stop by the office, and we can give you the paperwork. You just have to make sure we meet all the building use requirements that we do for all the groups that come in.
Okay, so it is a possibility that this can happen?
It's a possibility. I know that for our groups to come in, there's an insurance requirement, but sometimes we can work through the youth commission or another agency. So stop in, we'll give you the building use forms.
Okay, okay. Thank you very much.
It'll be coordinated through the athletic department for the space and the time.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our public forum for this evening. We'll now move on to-
Mr. President, if I may?
Yes.
Can I respectfully request that we respond to the comments of the second speaker?
Of the second speaker?
Please.
The reason I did not respond, it has to deal with a specific student, and we're not permitted by statute to respond to specific students. I would ask the speaker if she would like to make an appointment with Superintendent Wilds, and go in and sit down and speak to her. We're prohibited by purport.
And that response is sufficient?
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll go on to presentations this evening. Under 4.1, resolve that a donation from Ms. Ingrid Wood in the amount of $500 be accepted and given to the high school video and television studio.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Ashia?
Well, I'm going to approve.
All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Can I call Mrs. Shultis up for the presentation?
We just have a short presentation that I'm going to have you watch first, because that'll explain a lot, and then we'll just fill in the blanks with the few seconds we have left afterwards.
All right, thank you.
Hi, my name is Thomas Savaglio, a local resident here in Allenville. I graduated from EHS in 2010, and I just graduated from SUNY New Paltz with my bachelor's in sociology with a concentration in human services and a minor in psychology. It was my time at New Paltz where I met Marie Shultis, the director of Awareness, Inc. I was very excited to hear about the work she was doing for high school kids in New Paltz regarding the program. The program consists of kids teaching and helping their peers overcome and prevent challenges related to substance abuse and anger management. I quickly became a volunteer in 2017. Now, we have moved the program to the Allenville High School, where we intend to reach out to kids who may not have a safe outlet where they can discuss their lives revolving around these issues. We have a dedicated group of student leaders and faculty that are involved in the program. It is a non-for-profit organization that I feel would benefit the community. As a former student and someone who is passionate about the welfare of every child, I stand behind the program and believe it makes a difference.
Ms. Manley, you're being charged with unlawful possession of marijuana. If you want, I could send you to attend the awareness program at Allenville High School. Does that sound good to you? Okay. Knock.
The reason that you're here is because you have engaged in conduct that endangered the health and safety and morals of others, as well as yourself. I'm going to offer you a different option. If you successfully complete the awareness program, we can modify that discipline, that penalty.
All right.
Next.
Hey, guys. I'm in, digging in there. I'm really careful at this point.
So you should really join the awareness program here.
I, yeah, I think about you.
All right.
If you're in need of help and need support from peers, join the awareness program today. All new members, welcome.
I really wanted to come and thank you. It was two years ago when I met Victor Escalera Cruz, and he came into the program in New Paltz where we had it, and he came and spoke before the county legislature, telling them how he wanted to move the program into Allenville, because he had to participate in New Paltz. So I did my internship at SUNY New Paltz and ended up coming up here for the last year working in the school, and we were able to bring the program in. We brought New Paltz High School students here to peer-train your students, and I just wanted to thank you for, your school is just so proactive, your principals, Ms. Waits here, Mr. Pabon, I mean, I don't want to name names, because so many of you are just so awesome, and your students are really amazing, too. We have the video department here tonight, we have Ray and Christian. I want to thank Tom for coming, and of course, Mr. Lukasewski, he's not here tonight, but he's been a huge part in this, and Sean, and Alan. I don't have everyone's names down, but this is Ingrid Wood, and she donated money to our cause a couple of years ago, because she liked what we were doing, and then we decided that we wanted to use that money to do things for kids, so she decided that she wanted to donate to the video club, so I'll have her come up and present it to Alan.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any questions from the board? I would just like to say on behalf of the board, I'd like to thank you for your generosity, but I'd also like to thank you for what you're doing here. It's certainly more than a worthwhile cause. I'd like to point out Mr. Victor Cruz, he's definitely, I'm so proud of you, because I've seen you, you know, do this work and- seen you, you know, do this work and come, and come full circle and I really think it's a credit to you, Mr. Cruz, and I wish you all the best in your continued success in the future. So good job and thank you for taking the time to come back to our youth here in Ellenville and to the people in Ellenville. It's very important what you're doing. You're certainly a role model for your peers to follow and a credit to your community, so thank you.
Thank you very much, have a great night.
Thank you.
Just like to, under board reports, under my report, I'd like to point out that we had a very special guest to the Ellenville community this morning. A number of, a number of you were here, actually the whole board I think was here today and a number of the community did appear as well. The lieutenant governor stopped down to, and along with our kids. A particular student, Bella Ramirez, made a speech, you know, on behalf of this new legislation going into effect called Red Flag, well, not going into effect, but certainly being presented before legislature for hopefully adoption. It involves, you know, putting some power back into our schools, into our teachers and administrators to be able to point out, to be able to identify those children who may have signs and symptoms, potentially who could be involved with gun violence and then, and then thus bringing them to the attention of everybody and actually getting guns out of the hands of these individuals. And perhaps avoiding an unnecessary tragedy such as an active shooter in a school situation. I think it's, it's, I'm really proud of the students of Ellenville. They went out there and spoke and Bella did a wonderful job. Thank you, Mrs. Ramirez, for sharing her with us. She did a wonderful job and, you know, stating out the students' positions and their viewpoints. She, you know, spoke her mind and it came from her heart. So it was a learning experience for her and certainly for all the students, but we certainly welcomed the lieutenant governor down here. I spoke with her privately for a few minutes. We really are anxious about seeing this, you know, legislation go into effect, those of us that read that legislation by, for Red Flag because it's a very important thing. If we can prevent a tragedy such as a school shooting, just one, identify one and get somebody the help that they need and prevent such a tragedy from occurring, what a wonderful tool to have in our tool bag and our resources and to, instead of arming our teachers with weapons, we're arming our teachers with knowledge and staff with knowledge to be able to identify those students that could potentially have the potential to create some violent acts here and possess and take those guns out of their hands. So I'd like to thank the lieutenant governor and her staff for choosing Ellenville. It was an honor to have, to have them down here in Ellenville and certainly the governor was supposed to come, was unable to, but we certainly did enjoy our time with the lieutenant governor. We have, just like events, we're definitely going to have all the grounds are going to be nice and good to go for graduation.
They will be ready to go.
Thank you very much for that. And any other board members have anything for this evening? Anybody? Nope? Okay, then we'll go on to our student representative, Mr. Lemadole.
The senior trip to Ohio was great. Everyone had a lot of fun. This year's students would be allowed to decorate their graduation caps. Many students were approved and willing to participate. Last night was the varsity banquet. Athletes were recognized for athletic abilities and dedication. That's all for today.
Thank you, Mr. Lemadole. Go on to the superintendent, Lisa Wiles.
Mr. President, can I just ask a question? Do we still have our policy for trips that, with the 500 mile limit?
We still have that in effect, but we can refer that back to the policy committee for review.
I'd like to refer that back to the committee because I feel like in today's day and age that, you know, that the distance, there's so many more opportunities, the further that kids can go and with the, the travel and the new security procedures. I know that that probably went into effect way back when, when, you know, nine eleven happened and all that kind of stuff and I just know one of the teachers asked about it and I think it's a great idea to at least take a look at the policy.
Are you making a motion to have that referred back?
I just, yeah, I'll make a motion that we review the travel policy.
To take a look at it, do I have a second to send it back to committee? Second to send it back for committee and review, so we'll refer that policy back.
I just want to make a comment about this. That policy is up for review at the next policy committee meeting.
Well, that was fast, thank you.
It is. That's why I, you didn't need a motion, but it's all good. We did, we do have the two, there's two field trip policies that'll probably be combined into one and that'll be at one of the next, one of the next upcoming meetings for sure, but it is on the radar. We're just finishing the eight thousand policies, we're almost done with the book, which is very good news and that is definitely on the radar for the next one.
Thank you.
There were some policies that I noticed that were passed by the Roundout School Board that were in the Ellenville Journal this week. In particular, I'd like to ask you to take a look at some, a couple of those, in particular it was one involving drug detection dogs and, and its use in a school building, so we could take a look at that and just see where that's at and there's a couple others that maybe to look at.
Yeah, we'll take a look at to see what they, what they have.
You're up.
Okay, so I just would like to point out, in the packet, there was some upcoming events. We have our fifth grade moving up this coming Friday at 9:30 in the high school auditorium. On Monday, the 18th, will be our kindergarten celebration. On Thursday, the 21st, is our eighth grade celebration moving up and the dance. And then on June 22nd, we have high school graduation, so hopefully the weather permitting, it will be in our normal sunny football field with the, underneath the rock. If not, the senior classes voted this year and plans are in place to have our high school graduation at Sullivan County Community College like we did last year. We'll make a decision probably by 12, 12:30 on Friday. If there's inclement weather, we have to notify them on what's happening, so keep that in mind and we'll be in touch. This upcoming summer, probably that evening on the 22nd, but definitely on Monday, the 25th, we'll be kicking off another summer of construction. We have quite a bit of work happening here. In addition to the summer construction, we have our Boost Academy that'll be running in the elementary school and our, this is the year that we sponsor and host summer school for the Roundout Ellenville Summer School. So that'll be beginning, that'll be held in the middle school. So we'll keep you updated with the progress of construction, but that will be kicking off before the reorg meeting, so I just wanted to share that with you. I do want to make a comment about the senior class trip and also our eighth graders traveled to Boston. So the feedback that I got from the administrators, our students really represented our school district really well and were complimented by people in the hotels, people in the parks. Mrs. White and Mr. Spinelli made sure that they shared that with us, so I just want you to know that we're really proud of them. They had a great time and, you know, looking forward to seeing pictures. I know we get to see those too and we can post them up on Facebook if the classes would like to share that, so we can share that with the community. So that's all I have this evening.
Thank you, Superintendent. Assistant Superintendent for Business, Mr. Napoli.
Thank you. I don't have anything in particular that I'd like to point out, but my, my report was pretty dense, so if there are anything in there that you'd like me to talk about, I'd be more than happy to field any questions.
Iris?
I just have one thing. I know we're putting in air conditioners and most of them are, a whole lot of them are up and running and I would like Mr. Napoli to put together some guidance about the use of them, perhaps, you know, that can be put up in each room so people have a sense of what the expectations are.
Sure, I can certainly put that together.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Okay, nothing further from Ms. Napoli. We'll move on to Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction, Ms. Angela Arbeena
So in my report, I included the enrollment as of last Friday for the Boost Academy at 87, but I'm happy to report that we have capped the attendance and there will be no additional enrollments. We are at 90 students. Let's, if we rewind the tape, last year we had 59 students, so this is quite an improvement from last year's enrollment. Two thumbs up to everyone who helped out in the effort of getting these students recruited and encouraged to participate in the academy. Also included in my report is the professional development opportunities for 2018 for the Ellenville Central School District. There's quite an extensive offering and quite a healthy turnout as well. There's a lot of interest in a lot of the workshops that we will be offering this summer, so I look forward to reporting back about how things turned out. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And in the board information, you will see dates to remember and also a thank you card that was provided to us. So mark your calendars for those important dates. We move on to personnel.
Excuse me, Phil, can I ask Angela a question on this? Angela, did we say that the Super Kids program was going to progress along to other grade levels and could you just give us a brief update on that?
Yes, absolutely. So the Super Kids program will be moving to pre-K, first grade and second grade. This time last year in preparation for the rollout of Super Kids to kindergarten, we were nowhere in the great shape that we're in this year. The materials are already in for the teachers. The teachers who are receiving the materials and implementing the program already have their teacher materials in hand, so they'll be able to leave for the school year with those materials so that they'll be able to become acclimated with them. There was a, an introductory kind of getting to know Super Kids one hour offered on Superintendent's Conference Day to all of the teachers that will be working with the program and implementation training will be taking place in July. Any teachers that are going to be using the program that are unavailable in July for the two dates that we have the training taking place will have the opportunity to be trained in the fall, but we are, all systems go, everything has moved very, very smoothly and the results that have been shared with me from the kindergarten teachers on how the students did this year are phenomenal, like phenomenal. I don't think that anyone anticipated to see the growth that the students have achieved in that period of time. I look forward to welcoming back the kindergarten teachers, whoever would like to come and participate in the conversation so that they can share with you their excitement and enthusiasm, which is palpable. It's, it's been a positive experience all the way around. Did that help?
That certainly helped. So I would like to go one further, as you said about the data. I would like to see a report in mid-July of the collection of the data that occurred from the assessments from when they began the program to when they ended, their measurement of growth and how successful we were in the kindergarten classes, so we can have that for us in mid-July.
Sure.
Thank you. Move on to the resolutions for this evening. We will, there's a letter from Pat Corbett. Upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools be resolved that the resignation of Patricia Corbett, elementary teacher, be accepted for the purposes of retirement effective June 30th, 2018 with regret.
So moved to second.
Moved to second, any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries unanimous. Six point two. Upon the recommendation of superintendent of schools be it resolved that the resignation of Patricia Siegel, security attendant, be accepted effective June 19th, 2018 with regret.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries unanimous. Upon the recommendation of superintendent of schools be it resolved that Larry Dumont's request for an unpaid leave of absence for the period of May 16th, 2018 through June 15th, 2018 be granted.
So moved.
Second. Been moved and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries unanimous. Six point four. Upon the recommendation of superintendent of schools be it resolved that Jessica Pomeroy be approved to work up to five days to be trained in a nurse's office at a rate of $244.71 per day worked in the month of June 2018.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries unanimous. Six point five. Upon the recommendation of superintendent of schools be it resolved that the resolution dated January 9th, 2018 be amended to read that the probationary appointment of Gabriella McCombs be extended for an additional six months with a new probationary expiration date of Ju-, July 25th, 2018.
So moved.
Second. Moved and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries unanimous. Six point six. Upon the recommendation of superintendent of schools be it resolved that Andrew Dawson and Kyle Guinea be appointed to work summer technology maintenance under the supervision of Edwin Moses Aponte at an hourly rate of $10.40 per hour work not to exceed 24 hours work commencing on June 25th, 2018 and ending August 31st, 2018.
So moved.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries unanimous. Six point seven. Upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools be it resolved that Tim Lukasewski be approved to work 20 hours per week not to exceed 200 hours at a rate of $41 per hour work for the summer of 2018 effective June 25th, 2018 through August 31st, 2018.
So moved.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries unanimous. Six point eight. Upon the recommendation of superintendent of schools be it resolved that Dr. James V. Fogarty be appointed as special education consultant at a rate of $750 per day work not to exceed 10 days per month effective July 2nd, 2018 through June 30th, 2019.
So moved.
Second. Moved and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries unanimous. Six point nine. Upon the recommendation of superintendent of schools be it resolved that Joe Logan be appointed maintenance coordinator at a contractual stipend of $7,642 effective July 2nd, 2018 through June 30th, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries unanimous. Six point 10. Upon the recommendation of superintendent of schools be it resolved that Lisa Dwyer be appointed as a part-time psychologist effective July 2nd, 2018 through June 30th, 2019 at a contractual rate of $71.78 per hour work not to exceed 30 hours per, per week.
Moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries unanimous. Six point 11. Upon the recommendation of superintendent of schools be it resolved that the CSE and CPSE committee be established for special education with the following members for the 2018-19 school year.
Motion to move the list.
Second. Motion to move the list and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries unanimous. Six point 12. Upon the recommendation of superintendent of schools be it resolved that the attached list of teachers be approved to participate in summer CSE and CPSE meetings and conduct testing as needed as they're at their prorated salary for the period of June 25th, 2018 through August 31st, 2018.
Moved.
List has been moved?
Second.
And seconded, any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries unanimous. Six point 13. Upon the recommendation of superintendent of schools be it resolved that the attached list of individuals be approved to participate in summer professional development session at the rates indicated.
Motion to move the list. Second.
List has been moved and seconded, any discussion on the list? Jody?
I see that most of the teachers put in for first, second and third choices. Are they granted all three of those or how is it working this year?
We're not exceeding 20 hours.
Not exceeding 20 hours per teacher. Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries unanimous. Six point 14. Upon the recommendation of superintendent of schools be it resolved that Andrea Hemstree, who holds a permanent New York State certificate in the area of school counselor, be appointed to a four-year probationary position of school counselor and in the tenure area of guidance counselor.
So moved.
Second. The motion has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Yes, sir. I think one of the things that I'd like to point out that all of us already know, when you take a look at the gentleman that left our school and came back to provide services to our youth, I think one of the best measurements of the type of job your school's doing is when your graduates come back and Andrea Hemstree, formerly Andrea Lauks, not only even coming back as a teacher, also part of the softball team that'll be inducted into the Hall of Fame next year. So I think that's indicative of the job that our teachers and staff are doing.
Yes, and it was great to see her come back.
She'll be assigned to the elementary school.
Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries. Upon the recommendation of superintendent of schools be it resolved that following coaches for the fall be approved as indicated for the.
Motion to move the list.
The list has been moved and seconded. Do we have any discussion on the motion? If. If not, all those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries unanimous. 6.16, "Upon the recommendation of Superintendent of Schools be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby approves the employment contract between the district and Vincent Napoli covering the period of July 1st, 2018 through June 30th, 2021 and authorizes the Superintendent of Schools to execute such contracts."
So moved.
Moved and seconded, any discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries unanimous. 6.17, "Upon the recommendation of Superintendent of Schools be it resolved that whereas Angela Urbina Medina's current title is the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction and whereas the district seeks to change Ms. Urbina Medina's title to Deputy Superintendent, be it resolved that effective July 1st, 2018 Angela Urbina Medina, certified as a school district administrator, should have her title changed from Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction to that of Deputy Superintendent."
So moved.
Second.
The motion has been moved and seconded in its entirety? Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries unanimous. "Be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby approves the employment contract for Lisa Wiles for the period of July 1st, 2018 through June 30th, 2023 and authorizes the Board President to execute the agreement on the Board's behalf."
So moved.
Second.
Seconded, any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries unanimous. 6.19, "Upon the recommendation of Superintendent of Schools be it resolved that the resignation of Barbara Devaney, teaching assistant, be accepted for the purposes of retirement effective July 1st, 2018 with regret."
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries unanimous. Move on to 7.1, recommended that this be considered the first readings of policies numbered 8,000.
Motion to move the list. Second.
Move the list in its entirety and seconded, any discussion on the motion?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
82171, I don't remember approving the new course, cybersecurity. Did we do that?
It's coming up.
It's coming up.
It's on our agenda tonight.
It's 8.3. It's 8.3.
It's under education.
8.3.
So I'm ahead of myself?
Yes.
Hey, I'm usually five minutes behind.
All right. Good?
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay.
It's great policy.
Any other discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries. 8.1, "Resolved that the attached list of student IEPs be acknowledged as appropriate, there are 41."
Move the list, President.
Second.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries unanimous. 8.2, "Resolved that the following volunteers be approved for the 18-19 school year."
So moved.
Second. Been moved and seconded, discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries unanimous. Here we are, Mr. Matthews, approval of new course.
So moved.
Cybersecurity Introduction, Information Security, approved, it's been moved.
Second.
And seconded, any discussion?
Raymond?
Looks very exciting.
Yeah. Looks like it's going to be an intense course, yes. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries unanimous. 8.4, "Resolved that textbook Corporate Computer Security be approved for purchase to be used as a primary textbook for the business course in a high school commencing in 2018-19."
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussions? Iris?
I just want to know if the book will be available for us to take a look at?
Do you have it?
It's going to be available in the central office, Mr. Pavone said he would bring it up, we'll make sure it's there, if anyone wants to see it, stop in.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to construction resolutions.
Do we do, do we move all the construction, 9.1 through 9.4? Did we do 8.5?
It's IEP review guidelines.
Okay.
So we have a motion to move all the construction resolutions, 9.1 through 9.4.
Second.
Moving and seconded, any discussion?
I do have a question regarding the HVC invoices, just reviewing the cover page of each of the requisitions, it seems as though there, one is one day behind the first, so then that just leaves me to think or believe that these payments, which are pretty substantial, were held up by a change order and I'd just like to have another conversation with our construction manager about the importance of moving these cost items along and closing them out.
Unless I'm wrong. I'd have to, I don't have the backup here, I have it in my office, I can certainly look at that, if you want to stop by, we can look at it together to see what the timing was when it was going to the architect, to the construction manager, back to me. You might be, you might be right, it could be out of their office, so I don't really know, I didn't really pay that much attention to it. Can I give you a call? Yeah, that's fine. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Any other questions? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries unanimous. Under other, 10.
Motion to move 10.1 to 10.8?
Second. It's been moved and seconded, move 10.1 through 10.8, any discussion on any of these motions? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries unanimous.
Excuse me, we need to go back, we need to vote on the textbook. Was it voted on? We had a.
Oh, I had a question and then, right.
We didn't vote.
Okay.
We will go back to the motion, "Resolved that the textbook Corporate Computer Security be approved for purchase to be used as a primary textbook for the business course in a high school commencing 18-19 school year."
All those in favor?
Been moved and seconded, can we vote on? All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries unanimous. Thank you. The next meeting will be July 3rd, it is our reorganizational meeting, so please mark your calendars and there will be no additional meetings this month, the meeting for June 26th has been canceled, so you will have a little bit of a break before the reorganizational meeting and before graduation. Is there any items that anybody would like to see for the next agenda?
I'd like to get a report on where we are with possibly moving the meetings to the elementary auditorium.
Okay.
And point in case, today we had people being recognized and there were people sitting all the way around the corner over there, couldn't even see the meeting.
Can you get a report on that?
We're working on it right now, actually, we're working on redesigning this whole room, we're working on the cost of, we're working on it, so I have Alan and Tim working on.
Can we have a report by the reorganizational meeting?
I hope so, I'll follow up with Tim and Alan.
Thank you.
Anybody else have anything for the next agenda?
Mr. President, at the next meeting, I'd like the balance of the board to be briefed on the progress of the joint board.
Okay, yes, we will, we should have an answer after tomorrow night's meeting, we should have some more positive information for that.
Excellent, I'd also like a status report on the workings of the Policy Committee.
Policy Committee?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Any other additions to the agenda? If not, I'll entertain a meeting.
Motion to adjourn?
To adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries unanimous, we're adjourned.